Okay, thank you and welcome everyone. Nice crowd that we have in front of us today. Welcome to the city council meeting for November 19th, 2019. Linda, if you please call the roll.
Deckent.
Here.
Dave Line.
Here.
Soldner.
Here.
Pyros DeCarvallo.
Here.
Inzki.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Darrell Peterson, if you'd be so kind.
Good morning. Let's pray. Dear Heavenly and Most Gracious Father, we thank you. It's a great honor and privilege to come into this season, Father, that we know everything with you as times and seasons. And Father, we just thank you, this season for Thanksgiving, that, Father, we need to learn to be thankful and to be a blessing, Father, and not a griper and a complainer. And Father, I just thank you as this season leads then to the greatest season of the birth of Jesus Christ. And Father, we thank you for that. We thank you, Father, for this city, even though it's not a perfect city, but, Father God, we love it. And Father, as we love it, we'll become doers and helpers and accomplish things that needs to be done. And Father, thank you that we're a part of this city. And Father, we just thank you that they have us as council members, Lord God, they have invited you into this meeting today because they've asked me to pray, and I pray, Father God, for the precious name of Jesus, that this service, this meeting, whatever, Father God, is going to be the greatest and the best, that this city only goes one way, and that is to get better and better. And Father, we just thank you that they have ears to hear, hearts to do, everything that you want us to do. And Father, we know it takes the natural and the supernatural working together to be great and wonderful, in Jesus' name. Amen.
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 Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Darrell.
Thank you, Darrell.
Next item.
Item four, oral communications from the audience.
Wonderful. This is the portion of the meeting where we invite those in the audience that would want to address the council, I see like we've got to take her, Chief, to come up to the podium, limit your remarks to five minutes, announce your name and address, and feel free to do so. Chief?
Good morning, Steve Beer Hutchins, Fire Chief. I just came from City Garage, and I thought it was important to let you guys know, but this is the first time in Hutch's history that we have what we call an EVT-certified fleet mechanic. EVT is an emergency vehicle technician, and it was one of our strategic goals, and I applaud Brian, I don't know if Brian's here today, I don't see him, but their staff and that has really put a lot of time and effort to get us a EVT-certified mechanic in the city here. And this person is dedicated to the fire department, and truly, they are the, you know, we get a lot of the accolades of the good kudos and stuff that we do, police and fire, but the true heroes of the city, I truly believe, are the mechanics that keep our fleet on the road 24/7, seven days a week. And to have this individual part of the city of Hutchinson, part of our agency in the fleet department, being able to fix our vehicles the way they're supposed to be fixed, is a, it's a new era for Hutch, and I think it's just an awesome endeavor that we have our first EVT mechanic.
Super.
Wonderful.
Great news.
Thank you.
And thank you for recognizing that individual. Anybody else want to address the council with, again, items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, next item.
Item five, consent agenda.
I would move to approve the consent agenda and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Deckent.
Yes.
Dave Line.
Yes.
Soldner.
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo.
Yes.
Yes. Next item.
Item six A, consider ordinance authorizing taxable industrial revenue bonds for Afaya Partners LLC.
This sounds like an Angela.
Good morning, Angela Richard, Director of Finance. Again, I come to you with IRB bonds. Back in February of 2019, we approved a resolution determining the advisability of issuing taxable IRBs for Afaya Partners LLC. So today, we are here to propose passing an ordinance authorizing the issuance of bonds and the approval of other pertinent documents related to this transaction. Afaya Partners plans to issue $6.2 million of taxable IRBs and close on the bonds around December 19th. The bonds will be paid in full by December 2030. As a reminder, there is no obligation to the city with these bonds. We are a conduit, we have no obligation to pay them, and we have no costs associated with closing or issuance of the bonds. We will be the leaseholder of the property for the life of the bonds, and the lease has been included with the documents, the bond indenture, master indenture, bond purchase contract, and other closing documents. The property will be exempt from ad valorem taxes for 10 years during the life of the bonds, and instead, Afaya Partners will pay payments in lieu of tax, which has already been approved with a separate agreement back in February. Our legal counsel has reviewed the attached documents and approved them. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance as stated and authorizing the mayor to sign all the related documents. Dominic from Gilmore and Bell, who represents Afaya Partners, is here in case you have any questions. Are there any questions?
Very good.
Well, Angela, just for the benefit of the general public, we mentioned the name of the company, Afaya, but perhaps the general public doesn't know or recall what building and property we're talking about.
Afaya is related to Genzada, which is what I believe the public knows them as, which is renovating the old Dillons on 30th.
There we go.
They already have tenants there, Adams Brown Ball has moved in, and I think the public can see that they've progressed quite fast on that building, and they're making progress on that.
Any other questions of Angela while we have her up here? Questions of bond counsel while we have them in the room?
Well, it isn't every day that we have a $6.2 million economic development project, and I would just like to congratulate and to thank the group that has put this project together so successfully in a short period of time and enhancing that facility, that property, so it's a big win for Hutchinson.
Indeed. Yeah, always great to see some info.
It really is, yep.
Very good. With that being said, is there a motion?
I would move to approve ordinance authorizing the city of Hutchinson, Kansas, to issue its taxable industrial revenue bond, Series 2019, Afaya Partners LLC project, for the purpose of the acquisition, renovation, and equipping a commercial facility, and authorize certain other documents and actions in connection therewith, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Deckent.
Yes.
Dave Line.
Yes.
Soldner.
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo.
Yes.
Inzki.
Yes. Next item.
Item six B, consider ordinance amending the comprehensive plan land use map.
Hello, good morning, Amy Allison, Senior Planner. So before you is a request to amend the comprehensive plan land use map for Zero North Brentwood Street from high-density residential to commercial. There we go. All right. The applicant is Dane Powers on behalf of the property owner, Richard Bradley Peter. And the subject property is there shown for you. It is the northwest corner of Brentwood and 23rd Avenue, just for clarification. The comprehensive plan land use designation for the property is currently high-density residential, like some of the surrounding properties there. What they are requesting is to amend it to commercial, which you can see is to the south of the property. The current zoning designation is R5, which is our high-density zoning district, and it is compatible with the high-density residential, however, it's not compatible with commercial, which is why they're requesting the comp plan map amendment. The applicant was kind enough to provide us with some conceptual plans, so you guys can kind of understand what they're hoping to do on the site. They would like to build a small office, which, again, is not permitted in the current zoning designation or comp plan land use map designation, but it is pretty compatible with that general area. He also provided some lovely elevation renderings, which we very rarely get, so we're very appreciative of that. As you can see, it's pretty reflective of the general architectural styles within that vicinity and that corridor, so it would really well match that 23rd Avenue area. Some photographs of the lot. This is the vacant lot. From staff's review of the history, it's not been developed, or if it had, it's been many, many decades since it has had any buildings on the site. It does have this hill that everybody seems to recognize, so. In fact, the lot is a large lot, but really it is two separate lots, so the request is for both lots at this time to be amended. To the south is a church. To the southeast is the alley, the bowling alley. To the east, there is a assisted living facility, and to the west, you have single-family housing, also to the north as well. Development Review Committee did meet on October 8th, 2019, no comments were received. In addition, the Planning Commission did review this request on October 22nd. We did have a few public comments that are noted there, and also in the minutes, if you had a chance to read those. Generally, they just wanted to understand what the proposed development was, see if it would trigger additional noise and/or traffic, but generally, after hearing the applicant's presentation at the meeting, they seemed to be fairly on board with what was being proposed, so. The Planning Commission did conduct their review. They did amend one of staff's original factors, which was factor one. They amended it to met, stating that the proposal matches the surrounding neighborhood, even though there is no adjacent commercial. They did feel, though, that that corridor was transitioning into more of a commercial nature, and so they felt that it did meet that characteristic of the corridor. So the factors that have to be met as part of a comprehensive plan amendment request are shown for you. Staff's, in addition to the Planning Commission's amendment, was provided in your staff report, so if you have any questions about that, please let me know. But, sorry. Okay, sorry. But in general, the Planning Commission did vote to approve the request on a vote to seven to one. So if you have any other questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. Also, the applicant is in attendance, so if you have something more specific to him, I'm sure he'd be willing to come up and speak, so.
Amy, what are the zoning all the way around? To the west, obviously, is a residential zoning. The nursing home, is that a residential zoning also?
It is zoned R5 since it's a high-density residential use, so that's pretty appropriate, yeah.
Of course, to the southeast of there with the alley, that would be a commercial.
It would be a commercial.
Block away, or how close is that to the subject property?
It is a little over 200 feet.
And to the south is what?
To the south is R5. It's church. A church would be permitted in C1 or commercial, but usually it's public and institutional. I don't know why it's zoned R5, but.
I know this is being requested for the entire parcel, is there more? How many lots are there there?
There's two, as plotted currently.
Roughly splitting in half?
That's correct, yes.
With the line going east and west?
Some things to also note about the lot, which was in the staff report, is there is a pretty significant easement along the west boundary line, which they would not be allowed to build in. So that was mentioned during the Planning Commission, and a lot of people felt that was enough of a buffer, separating it from the single-family residential to the west there.
How significant?
50 feet.
50?
Yeah.
Now, there's nothing there barrier-wise, other than the easement, there's not a fence, tree row, that kind of thing at all?
No, but in regards to development, there would be some barrier that would be required, whether it's a fence or a landscape buffer, that's built into our zoning regulations that they would have to meet.
My big question of the, you say the owner's here, or the representative at least?
The, yes, the applicant is here.
Yeah.
Please come on up, I think Steve's about to ask you a question.
Well, before you leave, Amy, was there any consideration by the Planning Commission given to splitting the lots and considering just the south lot for this particular build versus both?
It was considered. From a zoning standpoint, we always prefer to have multiple lots of the same zoning designation instead of just one. In addition to that, it was noted that R5 is high-density residential, so what he's proposing to do would actually be of a lesser.
Intensity.
Intense use than a multifamily, if that were to be built. I think Dane can talk a little bit more about his plans for future on that northern lot, but it did sound like he was thinking more of a residential use.
And I know I looked through the list, I don't recall it well, but could you cite one or two of the highest usage in a C1?
Sure. Some of the highest usage would be like a restaurant or a gas station, but typically, it is a very, it's our least intensive commercial zoning district, so a lot of those would have extra regulations that we would place or design requirements under new codes to make sure that it kind of minimizes impact on surrounding residents and neighborhoods. Plus, like I mentioned, since it is adjacent to residential, they would have to meet specific design requirements to minimize that impact as well.
And what would those be?
Like the separation requirement, landscaping buffers, either a fence buffer. We do consider traffic and all that as part of our review process, so, but we typically handle that at the site plan process as they're building, so.
Okay, thank you.
Dane, do you mind? Come on up, tell us a little bit about what you're working on over there.
Well, good morning, Dane Power, I'm at 2801 Hawthorne Lane in Hutch, and currently, I have the Edward Jones office at Fourth and Main. The objective here is to build my office as it was plotted on there, and the question that most of the residents had, and I would have the same question if I lived over there, is what about the rest of the lot? You know, what about the other two acres that you don't need? And, you know, I grew up here, I remember that dirt pile from a long time ago. I don't think I was one of the kids that rode on it, but it may have been. And I've always felt that Brentwood is a residential street, and I would prefer an office address on 23rd, just because Brentwood is for houses, but C1 does overlap with R5 when it comes to what you can build there. So R5 would allow as much as an apartment complex, like the Inverness Apartments on Severance. I think a better use of that and to match the other homes around it. The one directly to the west is a duplex, but I think there's a lot of room there for perhaps multifamily housing, but not apartment complex, not something that stands out.
This is your intentions for the northern part of the lot?
That's right. And there won't be a lien on the property itself, so really, I will have a vested interest that if it doesn't make sense to the other property owners, and it doesn't make sense to me, it won't happen.
Ask a similar question that I addressed to Amy. Why not leave the north lot, R5? Because R5, I mean, a high-density could go on a C1 as well, but.
Sure. The way that it was explained to me, and I'm an amateur at this, and I apologize, but the way it was explained is that if I am, you know, my contract is for the entire owned property, and it's two parcels for the plating, but I think it has been combined for tax purposes. So to separate that out would have been a different issue, from what I gathered.
If those issues weren't there, what, yourself as the owner of that property, what are your thoughts in that regard?
I would prefer to just buy what I actually needed, but having control over the rest of the neighborhood, I think, and I have had a chance to speak with quite a few of the neighbors as well about what they would like to see in there, and a lot of them were surprised that R5 would allow something a lot taller than they thought they would.
Yeah, I mean, certainly could, would allow a multi-story building, and, yeah.
You're not trying to scare anybody, but if I had a choice, I'd rather live next to a 2,000-square-foot office than a three-story apartment.
Yeah.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you for visiting with us.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff while we got Amy?
Amy, as we see corridors transition, do we go back and review the comp plan? Does the Planning Commission do that on a regular basis?
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely, I think Ryan could probably talk a little bit more to that, but the reason why we went the five-year strategic plan was to build in the ability to go back on a semi-regular basis and update kind of the goals and hopes and strategies for the next five years.
Great.
Obviously, with my question, my concern is not really with the south parcel. I mean, I would agree, 23rd or certainly east of there, and even maybe that particular area is transitioning, but is the north? How big of a deal would it be not to zone the north parcel, C1?
You'd have to split it first, wouldn't you?
Yeah, I mean, we would want them to split it, because we don't like to have a lot with two zoning designations. It creates an issue in mapping and future understanding of that lot as they prepare to develop it. In regards to amending what Planning Commission has submitted to you for recommendation, I don't know, Paul, would they just, could that be motioned? Or would they have to deny and send it back to Planning Commission?
I think you'd want to set it back because that was not the proposal that was brought before the Planning Commission, and the folks around the neighborhood haven't seen that proposal.
Well, and before we go there, I know Steve's offering that question, but is there a desire by the remainder of the council to explore that? Or Steve, is there, did you want to further explore that?
I'd like to have some discussion first. There may not be any interest by the rest of the council. I'm interested in exploring that. I don't know what impact it would have in terms of Mr. Powers moving along and accomplishing what he wants to accomplish, and I don't know if it's something you want to do in a short time, or your plans are going longer, going out further in time.
I think when we hear feedback from the community that it's difficult to get something up and running, this is exactly the kind of barrier that they're talking about. This would add another month, because you'd have to take it back to the Planning Commission, which only meets monthly. They'd have to reconsider. They may or may not approve it, which would, no, I mean, why add a month if we don't need to add a month? If it makes sense, and it seems like the residents in that area, based on, there were some comments. It seems like they were generally happy with what they heard, from what I can understand, from what I gathered from the minutes.
Yes.
So I would be opposed to dragging it out further.
I lean heavily on what Planning puts out. It was voted seven to one. I also look at the comments from the surrounding neighbors, and there was concern, as there always would be, when something new is being developed. But they, it appears that they came around to the idea and understand what's going to be built there. Once they understand, then they were accepting of it. I think I heard it or read it in here, staff is in favor of it, is that correct?
Well, originally, we did recommend denial, just because that one factor was hard to meet, but the Planning Commission, they have more discretion than we do, and they felt that that general consensus, which is why we have community input, was that that sector of 23rd is transitioning, and so it would match the proposed uses and zoning in that area, so.
To me, the applicant has been very clear that he owns the entire parcel, and that he would much prefer another office adjacent to his facility rather than a multifamily apartment complex, so I certainly would support the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
I would just offer that zoning, once changed, you know, we don't know in 20 or 30 years what will be happening there, and the multifamily can go into the C1 as well as it can go into an R5, but there would be other things that can't go into an R5. And I recognize your point as well, Jade, but it just seems to me that we ought to take a longer view than the immediate impact that maybe had in terms of the, but I sure like to hear what, you know, what your timeframe plans are. We didn't ask you to speak to that.
Do you mind stepping back over there? Sorry. That way, everybody can hear it over the system.
Our closing is tomorrow at four, and contingent, of course, but as far as plans are pursued, the current space that I have is owned by someone near and dear to me. It's owned by my father, and there have already been plans.
You think he'd let you stay?
Oh, you know, we've had a lot of very long conversations about it, but there are plans in place as soon as I am out. It really, my location at Fourth and Main is a lot more high-traffic than 23rd and Brentwood. I mean, it's a completely different world, and it's somewhat wasted on me. And really, what the plans are going forward is a lot more suitable for my current location. So to speak to timeframe, it's as soon as, as soon as we can get a lot of things going, and frankly, this is the first step, and before getting architectural drawings and all those things that do cost quite a bit of money, we want to make sure it was okay with the city first.
So, son, you're willing to stay, but hurry up and leave?
Yeah.
Oh, I wanted to make sure that he was taken care of, and so we had, it's impossible to keep a secret. I've heard about this from all sorts of people. I've already gotten a lot of congratulatory calls. We're far from over, but it's. But it's, yeah, people say, well, I heard that this was happening. I heard this was possible. What would you think about this or that? And so, you know, call Mr. Power about it. And there are definitely plans in place for it where there's not really going to be any other barriers as far as we're concerned, other than just how quickly we can get all the process done. And I would mention in 20 years, I'll be, well, the comprehensive plan goes to 2037, I'll be 52. So I mean, I do have quite a bit of skin in the game and hopefully I'll still be around for that.
Well, maybe I need to say 40, but okay.
Thank you.
With that all being said, is there a motion that anybody wants to put out there?
I move to accept and approve the planning commission recommendation to approve the request for an amendment to the comprehensive plan land use map, section M dot one dot dash dot B of the 2017 to 2037 comp plan for Hutchinson, Kansas, based on a finding of conformance to the factors required for approval. Adopt an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan land use map and authorize the mayor to sign.
You almost made it.
Ooh, that was a long one.
It has been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Deckent?
I do have some reservations and I think I've expressed those just in my questions, but I will vote yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Tyra Sticarolo?
Yes.
Andske?
Yes. Next item, please.
And I have no objection to what you're planning on doing. It's just that northern part that I had some reservations about.
And this aligns with other conversations that we've had with regards to zoning. That's Steve's voices, same opinion, so he's not kicking on anybody.
Well, maybe I am.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 6C, consider request to rezone property at zero, 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 North Brentwood Street.
All right, part two. This is the request to actually rezone the property to C1. Again, the same applicant and property owner. Here again is the property in question. As you can see, it is zoned R5. They are requesting C1. And again, now that you've approved that, this would change to commercial. The eight factors, or sorry, nine factors that planning commission considered are up on the board for you. They did, again, development review committee met October 8th. No comments received. They had a public here in October 22nd. As mentioned, similar comments were received from the, as the comprehensive plan amendment. They did amend factor two from staff's factors to say the proposal is similar use within the greater neighborhood and there is no real opposition. So now they felt all factors are met and they recommended to you guys to approve the zoning amendment from R5 to C1. Again, if you have any questions, happy to answer them, but.
Any questions of staff with regards to the item presented? I have one. It's more procedural than anything. How, how were you notifying? I believe it's, anybody who lives within a certain area, they get a letter. Did we go with the sign posting?
Yes, there are three steps notification. First is publishing a public notice in the newspaper in Hutch News 20 days prior to at least. Then we send a letter to any property owner within 200 feet of the boundaries of that parcel. And then the third step, which is a recent change, is posting a sign on the property saying zoning pending and it has information about what the request is and who to contact to get more answers to questions. So there's three ways people were notified.
Did that spare some interest either in the first part, the comprehensive plan change or the rezoning? Did that generate anything?
Most of the people commented were within the 200 feet, but there was a gentleman that lived further up on North Brentwood Street that saw the sign and that's how he got in contact with us. So it worked.
That's what it's supposed to do. Thank you for answering that.
No problem.
Is there a motion or any other questions?
Okay, I will move to accept and approve, yeah, the recommendation of the planning commission to approve the request to rezone zero, 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 however many zeros, North Brentwood Street from five, from R5, high-density residential to C1, office commercial district, based upon due consideration of the factors listed. Adopt an ordinance rezoning the property at five zeros, North Brentwood Street, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second?
It has been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Tyra Sticarolo?
Yes.
Andske?
Yes. Thank you. Next item.
Item 6D, consider ordinance amending section 13 dash 101 of chapter 13 of the city code.
Good morning. I'm Justin Combs, Director of Parks and Facilities. So chapter 13 of the city code is a chapter all on parks. Section 101 is the section that designates and names all the parks. So we're recommending two amendments to this section. The first one is to recognize and name Rivers Banks Orchard Park. And the second one is to recognize and name Chester I Lewis Plaza. A little bit about Rivers Banks Orchard Park, as far as the park goes, I'm sure everybody's familiar with it. This one, it just has never been added to the, to the code, even though it's been there for, going on five years now. As far as construction goes, we're working with the architect for the final drawing for the open-air pavilion that we've beat to death multiple times. But that project is, is still moving forward. As far as the name goes, Rivers Banks was actually the person who originally homesteaded the site in the 1870s, planted it as a fruit orchard. Property changed hands a few times, ended up being owned by the Dillon family, who used it as an orchard to grow produce. And then became a vacation kind of property, I guess, kind of a gathering property. And then they later actually donated 70 acres of that, 160 acres to the city, which is now the park space. So just a quick background on who Rivers Banks was. It's a name. It's not a, not a river itself. So that's where the name, name comes from. So that's the first amendment. The second amendment is to add Chester I Lewis Plaza. So the, the park itself or the plaza itself is complete. We finished it earlier this week. We did do a walkthrough with the architect and the contractor. Have a very, very short punch list, just a couple items. The park is open. And very happy with the results. If you haven't been by that, I encourage you to, to go down and take a look at it. As far as the naming goes, it was Chester Lewis. You know, back in, in April, there was a group that was interested in the naming of Avenue A Park to Smallville Park. And then that kind of created some, some, some public input about naming of that park as opposed to future parks. The name Chester Lewis came up, was very popular with the public. Also, there was some folks, Hutch Harmony, who'd been working on that name for several years. They just weren't quite ready to bring that up to, to sit, to the city council. But then the Smallville kind of, kind of moved that process along. So that was back, I believe, is the April, May time period. At that time period, there was interest in the council to name the next park or specifically, specifically this park after Mr. Lewis. So that's kind of the direction we had. That's kind of why we're here. But I would like to invite Darryl Pope to, to speak a little bit about Chester Lewis. Darryl is the president of the Hutchinson branch of the NAACP.
Welcome, Darryl.
Good morning. Good morning. Darryl Pope, Hutchinson, Kansas. What I would like to say is I knew the Lewis family. His, growing up as a youngster, his mother was the superintendent of Sunday School that I went to. He was, she was also one of my teachers. His dad was a mailman here in Hutchinson and also the publisher of a black newspaper, The Blade. And Chester Lewis was a born and raised here in Hutchinson. He was a freedom fighter early in his life. And he went on to graduate from Hutchinson High School and to go to, K, or went and enlisted in the army. And after he was discharged from the army, he went to KU where he became a lawyer. And his efforts there, he was recruited by the then-setting president, John F. Kennedy, to work on his legal staff. But Chester Lewis was determined to have his own law firm. And so he settled in Wichita where that he was responsible for desegregating the Wesley Nursery at the hospital, or the, desegregating the swimming pool. For, he was also responsible for organizing the sit-in in 1968 that started the chain of sit-ins that ushered in the public accommodations law. He went on to integrate the Boeing, where that was one of the larger employers and the largest employees, rather in Kansas, I mean, in, in Wichita and also in the state of Kansas. And so he has several things to add to his credit as far as a person that promoted social justice and equality for all people. And I think it's only fitting that his, a park be, or a plaza be named in his memory here in Hutchinson, his hometown, where he was born and raised and just grew up just a few blocks from where that park is right now. So we want to commend the city council for considering this and ask that you support this effort.
Thank you, Darryl.
Darryl, did you, did you know Chester Lewis personally?
Yeah, I knew him. He was older than I was, but I knew him as a youngster. And he was a dynamic individual. He was a very forward, progressive-thinking young man. He encouraged a lot of those others of us that were younger to pursue, you know, social justice and equality for everybody.
There you go.
Super.
Well, you obviously took it to heart with your role in the NAACP and your longevity within that organization as well.
Yeah, we, we believe that everybody's entitled to equality.
There it is. There it is. Well, one of the great things that came out of the conversation that we had about the possible renaming of the Avenue A Park was that this brought Chester Lewis to light, to me. Now, more people in the audience are very well aware of himself, of what he did and where he was from and all that, but I was not. But in the course of doing that, then I, I, I looked and I started really paying attention. I had the chance, I happened to be in Wichita and there's a great park over there on Douglas Avenue that has his name stake on there as well. Then also forced me to kind of look around and look at our current park structures, ornaments, whatever we have. And, and I couldn't find, and I could be mistaken, that we have any civil rights type of commemorations, if you will.
That's right. You're correct.
Okay. And if I missed one, I do apologize. But, so I think this is a great opportunity to kind of right that wrong, so to speak, and, and recognize one of our own who grew up in Hutchinson and fought the good fight. And, and you continue that fight as we go forward. So that's, that's all I wanted to add to that. Anything else, Mr. Pope or Justin?
I just had a question about how we're going to mark the name. Like, do you have, do you have ideas? Is there going to be just regular signage? Is there going to be a statue? I'm, I'm just curious.
I know there's mural space too. I don't know if that's part of the plan or not, but.
So we've already formed a kind of loose informal subcommittee to work on that and that issue. It's how, how are we going to tell the story within the park? So we're looking at multiple ideas. There's mural space. There's other art space. There's wall space. There are other space for art. So there's, there's a lot of ideas. So we have not honed in on one yet. Our goal, this committee is in, in April, sometime in mid-April. I haven't set a solid date yet. Is to do kind of a dedication of the name and then some unveiling of what that storytelling piece is going to be, whether it's artwork or work.
Great. I just think there's a real opportunity for education there so that everybody in, in the community knows that someone of that caliber came right from here in Hutch. So, thank you.
I will also add, I did have the occasion, I made a point to drive down the alleyway this morning and it really is shaping up. It still has a very industrial feel, a lot of, lot of concrete work and so on. But you can see the vision of what it's going to be with the, what's been done to the wall on the side of the track. Six new trees have been planted in the planter boxes. And, yeah, it looks, it really does look good. Anything else for Justin?
And Justin, we are, this is a plaza, not a park, at least in terms of not name, naming of it.
Correct. Yeah, it functions more as a plaza than, than a park, yeah.
Not a lot of green space.
Yeah. No playgrounds.
Adult playgrounds, maybe.
All right. I would move to approve ordinance amending section 13 dash 101 of chapter 13, City Parks of the Code of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Tyra Sticarolo?
Yes.
Andske?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here.
Yes, it is.
This is a great day in that regards.
It is indeed. Thank you. Next item, if you would, please.
Item 7A, consider demolition of structures determined to be unsafe and dangerous.
And before we do that, everybody who's here is absolutely welcome to stick around for this fascinating piece that we're doing next. But if you were here purely for the park piece and if you want to use this as your opportunity to exit, feel free to do so. Not asking anybody to leave. Sorry.
That's hilarious. Because everyone's always afraid to get up and leave and then they're stuck for another two hours.
We'll allow it just a moment for, for the folks that want to exit to do so. Yeah. It, it crossed my mind. It's always awkward. You don't want to be the one to stand up or not. Okay. And it is not a locked door, so you can leave at any time or come and go as you please. But that was your opportunity. No, I'm just kidding. Okay, Trent, sorry for the interruption.
No problem. Trent Maxwell, building official for the city. Coming back with our demo list, we have had our hearing back on October 15th. And we gave each of the applicants or the property owners 30 days that is required. So we're back after that 30 days. Going through, before we get to my recommendations, there's maybe a couple of property owners that have not presented any plans to you previously. But go through our properties. If there's anyone that would like to discuss something with you that hasn't, that might give them the opportunity, then we can get to my recommendations if you'd like.
You're speaking to someone who might be in the audience, is what you're saying?
Correct. So go through these couple that we've already signed. This was a change. This is 225 East First. There's three structures on the property. The owner and representative of the property came in yesterday and signed the release. So the only thing they ask is, on one of the structures, there's some, some doors that at the time of demolition, they want to salvage, so.
As you're scrolling through that, you can make those type of accommodations, obviously, if there's some repurposing of parts and things that might have historical value or nature.
Yeah, so what we do is if they want to get it off, say tomorrow, and remove things, then they're required to board it back up. Otherwise, they can coordinate with me and our demolition contractor. And if we get it in a timely fashion, they can remove it. Demolition contractor's there and there's no neighborhood safety issue. So they can go ahead and collapse the structure after those items are removed, so, yep. Okay, so these are the ones that we'll get into if there's someone that wishes to speak to you. Otherwise, we'll keep moving forward. 516 East Second, I haven't had any contact. I don't know if there's any owners.
I might ask, is anybody in the audience representing this property?
Have we heard from the owner? There's nothing?
No. Nope. There's.
Unable to make contact.
Correct. Yeah, there's only the properties that I've recommended and then, other than the signed release, one other property owner that I've talked to. And the other ones, I've had no communication with, so. Now, this one that we do have, they're within my recommendation, so we can come back or we can speak to it now.
I don't see her.
I don't think she's in the audience. She has reached out to three different contractors. She's had the electrician already over there. I believe she has her glass already contracted with Sturgeon Glass, if I'm not mistaken. And then the roofing contractor came and spoke to me on Thursday. At that time, he wasn't under contract, but he had just finished his proposal to her. So she's part of my recommendation, recommendation for the three months and how you guys.
Those are the current pictures, I think, are relatively current.
Correct. These are current photos. The things that she has changed currently are more in, in cleaning of the property and then preventing the pigeons from going in.
Let me ask if there's consensus. Is there, you know, to keep the things moving and to, to smooth line the procedure, would it be better to go ahead and see if we have consensus on the individual items? So we don't have to backtrack to it? Would you be okay?
Yep, it'd be fine.
I would be inclined to listen to Trent on this one. It sounds like there's progress being made and let's go forward.
Oh, yeah.
Agreed.
Definitely.
Perfect. If that's guidance.
I'll make a note on the ones that you're in favor of.
Will that work? Then we don't have to dance back and forth, back and forth.
Okay. Now, this one here, I don't have any current photos of it. I have been by the property many times and the owners are in the audience. I did go by there again yesterday. This is the Bernard's Restaurant, Bone Break, in basically Highway 50. The proposal, she does have a contractor. The side where you see, which is on the left side of the photo, which would be the south side, that is going to be demolished. The side to the north, they do have some supplies that have been dropped off. Groover Construction, I believe, is the contractor that will be performing the remodel of just the north end of that structure. And then part of the same property is this here, and I went by there yesterday. Didn't want to take any photos because I didn't think it would really reflect all the work that they've done. Because it still looks like there's work to be done. But they've been very, very good about spending a lot of their time there. It is Suzie's son, Sam, who's been doing the work. It is Suzie's son, Sam, who's been doing the work. Yesterday, the roof was completely ripped off, almost 80 or 90% of it, down to the one by decking.
This is the residence you're talking about?
This is the residential part, yeah. Some of these trailers have been removed or gone. He had two small garages or storage buildings that he has demolished and totally cleaned up, and so now he's working on the house. Part of the house is painted, there's still paint to do, there's still work to do, but he's made real good effort.
It's obvious that a good deal of work has been done already.
Yes, just when I decided on whether or not to take the photos, because there's still items, it's still a construction site, it's still a cleanup site, I didn't think it would reflect the best for him, but I've been by there so many times, I can see all the progress that has been made on it, so.
Did you say you did or did not want to offer your suggestion until after the individual had a chance to speak, or?
No, this one I find, it's part of my recommended extension.
This would be part of the.
Hey Trent, just a question on the three-month extension, is that the drop dead date as such for completion of the project?
Correct. Now, from that.
No further extensions?
Well, that comes back to the council on an update.
It's going to depend on how much progress they've made.
I know in the histories, some have done well with the extensions given, and some have fallen short, so.
Historically, those that work with the contractor have done better than those.
Absolutely, it's been the owner do-it-yourselfers that have had the most struggle of trying to get something.
So there's some discretion here on the three months?
Yeah, absolutely. Three months is just my, a lot of the timeframes that were submitted, and I've got those with me today, but had three months. One of the ones that we're going to talk about, his was all within three months, so he's pretty confident, confident that he can get his accomplished. So I think we can see a huge progress, especially the ones that are using licensed contractors, the old Beebsters Liquors, all licensed contractors, the project here on 2100 South Bone Break, the restaurant side is licensed contractors, the residential side is the son, the owner of the property, and then if anyone else speaks, I'm not sure who they're using, but yeah, contractors is a better shot of getting something accomplished.
Is there an inclination from the council on, if you want to.
Yeah, I, yeah, I was out by this, well, this last week, and yes, there's a lot of progress that's been made from what we saw initially with those photographs, so I am very supportive of continuing.
The body, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Not to preclude those that came, if you wanted to, what we basically said is we're saying that there should be a three-month extension, you're welcome to tell us about the progress, or if you don't want to take the mic, you don't have to, come on up. And good morning.
Good morning. It's what Trent said, we're continuing to make progress. The roof is tore off, the two buildings in the back are done, there is a dumpster, which I'm seeing, Mrs. Soldner, you've seen in the driveway, so we're going at it, but another thing we want to keep in mind is the weather factor. If it gets too cold, of course, work will stop, but Trent, I feel like, has been very honest and forthright in letting us know that he's behind as long as we can show physical progress, and that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
I'm glad you brought up honesty and forthrightness, it goes both directions, and if you're straight with him, he will be straight with you as well.
Oh, yeah.
And so, and lines of communication, so.
And I told him I will probably bug him a lot, but.
That's a good thing, communication, as long as you guys are talking.
So those trailers are gone.
Yeah.
How's the 90 days strike you in terms of timeframe, and I heard you talk about weather, of course?
All we can do, we're human, is just keep going.
Yeah.
And so.
Well, and I would offer too, I don't know specific.
I mean, my project next door is bigger.
Yeah.
But for the house, he will definitely show progress.
Sure.
We're going to try the 90 days, we may need another extension.
Yeah.
So I want to be up in front and tell you.
You've got a plan, you're working on it, that's.
And I will tell you, historically, we're inclined to work with individuals that work with us, and we see progress.
All right, thank you.
So perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzie.
Okay. So 207 East D, I think when I showed up to take photos of it, it was the only time when I had contact with the relative that lives next door, but I haven't had any contact since, so I don't know if there's.
Anybody in the audience representing this property?
Is the next door relative the owner of this property as well?
Yep. 624 East D, same thing, no communication.
Again, anybody representing this property?
The only thing I've heard is from a friend of his that he is staying in California, he's not contesting the demolition, but I haven't heard from him, so.
That's the old church, right?
Yep.
Okay, yeah.
Now, this owner is here, we have had some discussions recently, I'm not sure if she wants to speak on if she has a plan or not. Before, yesterday, I wasn't sure that anything was going to happen, and she's reached out to some contractors, they have not even got back to her, I reached out to the same contractor to see if they understood that, we had a meeting this morning, and some information would be good to have, and I got no answers, so. Barbara, do you want to?
Good morning.
Please.
Good morning.
If you say your name, please.
Barbara Crowe.
Thank you, Barbara.
I didn't get the contact that I wanted, or knowledge to keep going, or whatever, but I do want to try within this next whatever, three months or whatever, to get something going, or let you know that I can't.
How about 30 days?
That's fine.
Would that give her enough time to, since you said the contractors hadn't gotten back to you, Trent, would that give her enough time to be in communication with them and get some final? I hate to have you bring it back again, but rather than three months.
I think that's a fair compromise.
Would 30 days be more appropriate?
I was thinking the same thing. Would that work for you to do what, I heard you say contractor, so you're planning on.
Give me time to talk to someone, you know?
And I might add to, as you visit with these contractors, drill down to the actual expenses associated with it, because that can be alarming sometimes, and then visit with Trent about those things, and he might even have some avenues with regards to funding mechanisms or opportunities that other people have explored, but sometimes the cost factor can be very eye-opening. Within 30 days, I would think that you would probably have adequate time to at least get some estimates. Maybe not with those particular contractors that don't want to call you back, but.
Right, thank you.
But maybe with some others. So, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Bless you.
Same thing, no contact.
Anybody in the audience?
Months ago, same thing, they're going to pull some doors off, family, but not from the owner, so.
Okay.
This one here, we do have a plan that was presented, this is part of my recommended three months, and three months does work within his timeframe that was originally submitted. He's made some progress, he's got different ideas, he's, I'm not sure what, but with the roof, the roof needs to be replaced, so he's trying to figure it all out. Other than that, I know he's replaced the doors and windows, and I think the last time, so the water heater's gone, but a lot of these windows are replaced, they have boards on the inside of them. I don't know that I can speak anymore, other than, he's got some material and he's got some, some plans to get it done within the next three months, so he's part of my recommended three months. But he is here, and I don't know if he wants to speak or not.
Is it, sir?
Yes.
Please, come on up, and again, if you don't mind, give your name, and let us know where you're at.
Kevin Dilly, 1600 Prairie. Right now, well, this last 30 days, I've been stressing, or not stressing, but working more on the outside to make it more presentable to the city. I've got some different photos, if you'd like to see them.
If you have them, yeah.
Sure.
We usually, if you wouldn't mind handing them to councilwoman here on the end, she, you're doing right, she'll look at them, she'll pass them in this direction. Thank you.
I took the boards off the outside and put them on the inside, painted them, some of them don't reflect the paint, but I painted them black, so it don't look like wood in there. Mainly to keep people from looking in there, seeing something they might want to walk away with.
Sure, sure, yeah.
Painted the outside. The roof, yes, I'm planning on getting it redone, I got to figure out, get ahold of a couple more contractors on that. It don't leak, so I was planning on going ahead and starting on the inside, getting the wiring done, getting it livable again within the next 30 days, or six, three months was his, for his recommendations.
The interior photos, does that reflect some work being done? I think I recall seeing the condition similar to that.
I've done a little bit on the inside.
But not a whole lot of change to what?
Not, not a whole lot of inside change. The one front window, I boxed it in the way it should be, but like I said, I was more trying to get it presentable for the neighborhood, so they then go by and say, oh, look at that rundown house.
I know oftentimes, a lot of the complaints are driven, driven by the exterior conditioning, and so you would be winning favors with your neighbors, I assume.
Yes.
By getting that addressed. Plus, that is the structural shell, I can't emphasize how much you want to make sure you emphasize and get that roof done.
Yes.
And then make it impervious to.
And when I had the fire, they bended it by knocking every window in the house out, and since then, I've replaced every one. Every window's been, well, there's two they didn't knock out, and I didn't replace them. I probably will replace them because the new windows just look a lot better. Just haven't done that, I figured to put my finances where I need it and get them at a later date.
Well, thank you for your work, it's not over.
No, it's far from over.
Continued progress, I put a lot of stock in what he says with regards, and if he recommends it, I personally would do so as well. Is that the consensus of the group?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you again for coming down. Sometimes even just showing up, as you noticed, is part of it as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the photographs.
Yeah.
413 West Sherman.
Anybody here in the audience representing this property? And what kind of communication did you have there? I can't.
We haven't had any. Early on, when we had some property maintenance code violations, I believe he was combative with our inspector, and so we've kind of had a non-communication as far as verbal interaction with this individual, so. But the history of it, this was a house, the parents or the owners of the house are deceased, the son lives in, I think, a property that the parents owned beside it, is now his residence, and has since turned it into a storage building.
This building?
Yes.
Storage?
And it had a fire, a lot of the repairs that he's tried to make just have not been done proper at all, but he, he didn't really want to go through the right channels or avenues to repair it correctly or to communicate with us on it, so.
Is this the one we received the letter on last council meeting?
No, I don't think that was.
This isn't the house we received the letter on, from the gentleman who's incarcerated?
No, no. And that one is not on a demolition list. We have an open violation on that, and we have since put an extension till he's released.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Your recommendation?
Demolish.
Looking at it, yeah.
And that is the end of my presentation. From your notes, it seems like the consensus is the three months on the four properties identified. We do need to make one change to the second action, and that is the 204 East Avenue F to be given a 30-day for a plan, the contractors, et cetera, so.
Because the motion itself suggests the three months, so we need to.
Well, the motion suggests.
The three months is fine, the second one recommends demolition to go out for bid, and so we need to pull the 204 East.
I apologize, it's on the.
F, yep.
I apologize.
Should I just make a completely separate motion for that one?
I think that would be appropriate.
Yeah, probably.
Well, I'll go ahead and do that now, so that we don't get it confused with the others. I'll move to approve granting a one-month extension of time to complete the rehabilitation of 204 East Avenue F. That's the only one.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded on that one. Linda, please call the roll.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Tyros de Carvalho?
Yes.
Inskey?
Yes.
I'd move to approve granting three-month extension of time to complete the rehabilitation of 2100 South Bone Break, both commercial and residential structures, 1600 North Prairie Avenue and 840 East Fourth Avenue.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Linda, please call the roll.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Tyros de Carvalho?
Yes.
Inskey?
Yes. Thanks, Trent. Next item, please.
Oh, one more.
Oh, wait.
One more motion.
Oh, excuse, for the demolition case, yeah, absolutely.
I would move to approve demolition of the properties at 225 East First Avenue, 516 East Second Avenue, 207 East Avenue E, 624 East Avenue E, 600 South Elm, 1301 South Maple, and 413 West Sherman, and to solicit bids through the central purchasing department.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Tyros de Carvalho?
Yes.
Yes, I have a tendency to get ahead of myself. I'm ahead of my time. About 20 seconds ahead of my time, but still. Next item, please.
Item 7B, consider agreement with H.W. Lochner for runway 1331 Crack Seal Seal Coat Design Services.
Good morning, Peter.
Good morning. Peter Miller, Hutchinson Airport Manager. In your packet is a contract with our selected airport engineering consultant, H.W. Lochner, for design services for the next runway seal coat project, hopefully to take place in 2020. It's a pretty standard contract, we did this last year with the taxiway Alpha seal coat. Really, the only difference is, this one's about 30% higher, because the runway is about 30% longer than the taxiway was, so. The services include the preliminary design, which is basically the survey, it's also the design, basically the design itself that gets submitted to the FAA, which will then go out for bid once it's been approved, and also updating our DBE, which is our disadvantaged business enterprise program that we have to use out there for federal projects, so.
Peter, the 625, is that our 10%, or is it 10% of that which we are responsible for?
It would be 10% of that.
So we're responsible for $6,250.
Yeah, $6,250, so. The way the seal coat projects work is that we actually have to up-front the cost for the design until the bids come in, and then the FAA will give us the grant for 90% of the construction and 90% of the design cost.
Of the design, too.
That way, we don't have to do two grants.
Okay.
Any other questions of Peter, or we have?
Nope.
Well, then, I'd move to approve the design agreement with H.W. Lochner for runway 1331 Seal Coat, remarking, and DBE program updates for an amount not to exceed $62,500, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvola?
Yes.
Inzkey?
Yes. Next item.
Thank you, Peter.
Item seven C, consider bid report for wastewater treatment effluent channel repair.
Good morning. Jeff Peterson, Director of Engineering. Last, well, this year, early in, oh, end of May, early June, um, when we had the high water flows and flooding in the areas, um, we had some damage at, to one of the city's facilities, which is the, um, effluent channel, which is a, there's a picture of it. Kind of the location where we're doing it, on South Halsted Street, just south of the wastewater treatment facility. Um, the effluent channel is actually located on the wet side of the levee at that location, and it, when the channels are where it normally is, um, just allows the treated wastewater to be discharged into the Arkansas River. Um, the city's in the process of doing the temporary diversion channel portion, and actually today, they're getting it set up, so it'll potentially be diverted by the end of today or tomorrow. So, so we're, to dry out the channel so they can at least get it, um, cleaned up a little better, so it'll be ready for, um, construction going forward. So, I have, this is the, just the map of the area location. I have a few other pictures.
Oh, good.
This is actually, um, Todd Davis took these pictures with, with the city's drone, so I just thought, since we have them, we might as well show them. This is looking south from the wastewater treatment plant and the area on the wet side of the levee that, where the water was flowing, where the damage occurred. So that's just kind of the first pit, showing kind of the scope of the water there. This is roughly in the same location, and you can see the effluent channel going out in the area which was essentially washed out during the, those flows. To the, to the left, you can see there, um, that, what the city's done to kind of get it prepared for diverting the channel.
That's the beginnings of the diversion channel that we used.
It is, okay. So we, we graded it out. Um, the Public Works Department graded it out, and today, they're setting up some barricade things that would, um, move the flow into that channel and keep, and then start drying out the effluent channel. This is just kind of the, a location of the, what was washed out.
That it was.
What is the, um, lining, if you will? Is it just natural?
It's just con, it's a concrete.
It is concrete.
Concrete.
Yep, because this project will actually be, um, concrete for replacing the channel, and then we're also doing, since we're going to have it down anyway, replacing some areas that have spalled or need repairs for the whole channel.
Perfect.
And we're trying to do this during the winter, just so we can kind of, in case we have high flows next year, so we can minimize the chance of additional damage. Again, you can see the channel and what, what the city's done essentially, and the, um, the damages there.
And the diversion channel would just be a, a dirt channel? Or is it lined in some fashion?
It, actually, it's a dirt channel. We lined up the first portion of it to get it going that way, so it doesn't wash and those types of things. We have used these, well, we'll see how they work. We, the city has, um, procured some aqua barriers, which are filled with water that'll sit in the channel to kind of seal it off to start that diversion. It, this is a little more complicated than it looks like. Because we've got to divert the water and get it going someplace before we can even do the channel. I mean, do the channel repairs, and wastewater, you can't just shut it off, so that's, that just keeps going no matter what we do, so.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. So during that process, when it was underwater, it was still emptying into that?
Yeah, it was still discharging, yes. It was.
Yeah.
How does the wastewater, or what's the, uh, path or whatever, from the treatment facility area itself to the west, um, south side of the levee that has the open channel?
It's pi, it's just, um, enclosed pipe, or just a pipe.
Okay.
And it's gravity, completely gravity-based?
It is, at least from that point on.
Is there a backflow preventer then? So when it was flooding, that it wouldn't come back this direction under the levee?
Well, there's enough elevation change, because you can see most of the, the plant is higher than what the levee would be. I mean, if, if it would be impacted with water over the levee, then there, that potentially would be a problem.
I see. So it's all gravity from, from the plant itself?
We have to pump it up to treat it, and then, as it goes through the treatment, it gravities back, back down, so.
Hey, Jeff, um, would this project be eligible for FEMA funds?
Um, yes, potentially. Brian, Brian is in the audience today, but he's had some preliminary conversations with the Kansas Department of Emergency Management, and in hopes of, once we have the costs and expend the cost, recovering some of those, some of those costs. So, we don't know yet if we'll get them, but at least the eligible ones.
Get in the pipeline anyway, huh?
Right.
Yeah.
That, and potentially some of the design costs we had internally, and also some of the work preparing it for diverting it, so. I don't, I don't know what shape or form that'll be yet, but we got to complete, we need to complete the repairs either way, so.
Yeah, the work has to be done. Uh, just asking for reimbursement, even if they tell you no, it's still had to be done, so.
Right, right. And this, this is my last picture. Well, it's just the, kind of the flyover for that. So since we had it, I thought.
Yeah.
And again, that's the existing channel.
It is. And you can see a little bit of the work. We've piled some dirt there to fill in that, that hole there where the channel was washed out.
I'm kind of an adventurous guy. Would I be able to get a kayak on that one day?
We actually had to, to measure the hole, we actually had to get a boat out there just to see how much dirt we thought would be back in it. So we, we've measured the depths and stuff like that, so we've essentially been out there. And there's kind of the diversion area, and there's, and I left this last picture where we stopped and Todd doing the drone, so it's nice of him to, it's nice to be able to use that information from there, so.
Yeah, makes it much clearer.
Yeah.
So anyway, um, last Tuesday, we opened bids for this, and that, this is kind of the meat of the project. Um, we received one bid from Ward Davis Builders. It was for one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars. It is higher than the engineer's opinion or probable construction cost. This was kind of a difficult one for us to estimate in the first place, since it's mainly, it's very labor-intensive for this one, um, like the repairs to the, uh, existing, uh, channel. I mean, aside from replacing the channel, we have to do the repairs, chip it out and repour areas and tie rebar and some of those types of things, and it's cold weather work besides, so some of this work has to be done, might have to be tented or heated after they pour the concrete. So, so there's some costs that may or may not, we may not have included in our original estimate. We did have interest from some other companies initially, but it was a small enough project that they didn't want to mobilize and do that, so. So, and after looking at it a little harder, I think that we have a pretty good bid going forward. Um, it's something we really do need to do when it's, when we have the flows lower in the river and a little bit lower at the wastewater treatment plant, so.
It only looks about seven percent higher than the estimate.
Yeah, it's actually about nine percent higher, but it's relative, about twelve, thirteen thousand dollars over the whole project, so. So I need, like I said, right now, the, the project will be funded by the sewer fund with hopes of some reimbursements. So I do recommend that we approve the bids from Ward Davis Builders in the amount of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars. Any other questions?
Jeff, you spoke to, um, the difference between the engineer's estimate and the, and the bid. And of course, the, the bottom line number is, as you said, I think about seven thousand dollars, so not tremendous. But I sure do notice a big differences in some of the categories.
Yeah, there is some differences.
Reconstruction of the channel, about a forty thousand dollar higher than, than your estimate.
And we have a few that are higher, too, so.
And then, then on the reverse, several of them, a couple of them, I guess. Gosh, twenty-five, twenty to twenty-five thousand dollar higher. So any thoughts, concerns in regards to those, those big differences in the?
It may be where, where we kind of, what we thought some of those, some of the total costs would be put in the, the project. There might, for the, it looks like the biggest change, of course, is the effluent channel, so there, there might have been some things we didn't take into account going into it either. So it's, it's, it's kind of a, it's a little bit difficult to try to get those really lined up where, wherever they, they fall within the unit prices sometimes, and what they apportion to that for the, for the bid or the work, so. Maybe that's not quite the answer you're.
Well, it's not, it's not uncommon that when you start comparing, uh, unit price and line items from contractors, even four or five different contractors, you look at.
What a difference in their.
Yeah, they are, and at times.
It's just a matter where they.
It's just a matter where they put their costs.
Yeah. So it's, it's pretty normal.
It is.
Any other questions of staff? Uh, the contractor is in the audience, if you want to visit with them.
Yeah.
If not, I'll take a motion.
I would move to approve the bid and authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Ward Davis Builders in the amount of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars, subject to compliance with all legal requirements.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvola?
Yes.
Inzkey?
Yes.
Before you move it, weren't you, you, you're the plaza contractor, aren't you? Chester Lewis Plaza Contractor?
Yes, sir.
Where are you? Oh, there you are.
Yep.
Sorry.
I didn't back, so.
Yes, sir. Come on up if you don't mind for, for just a minute.
I'd forgotten you were here, otherwise I would probably ask you to come up back then, so, may I?
Please, please. Ward Davis, Ward Davis Builders, yes, sir.
Wouldn't you think the plaza was going to be finished up?
The plaza is completed, so, yeah, we, as Justin mentioned, there's.
Punch item, punch list, maybe.
Yeah, and we've taken care of most of those. I think I've got one lift that still needs to be taken off of there, but, uh, will be cleaned out for third Thursday, and all of our work is done, so it's got a little bit of work yet to do on some planters, which I'm sure would be more of springtime work, but.
Apologize, I, I seen you come in early, but I didn't realize you were back there when we were talking about the plaza.
It was a full house, I was waiting for a seat.
Yeah, it was a full house then, wasn't it? That was, that was it.
Yes, sir. Well, and, and thank you while we got you up here. You've done quite a few projects for the city, uh, and we, we love all our contractors, but I know your name's been called more than a few times lately, and that's, that's good for you, and you're a good, uh, homegrown business and so on, so we appreciate it. And we certainly appreciate the business. Glad to work with you guys, and, uh, and the city's always been real good to work with. Always pays quick and helps us pay our subcontractors and stuff, so. There are certain, certain things that, that do help, help with your prices, so we, we do appreciate it. Very good, well, thank you.
Thanks, Ward.
Like to pay our bills.
Uh, next item, if you would.
Item seven D, consider urban forest master plan.
Good morning. Justin Combs, Director of Parks and Facilities, again. So this item is near and dear to my heart. Prior to working for the city of Hutchinson, um, a lot of my experience was in, um, urban forest or arboriculture management. Um, I was the city arborist for the city of Wichita for a number of years, as well as a city forester in the town in, in southeast Michigan for about five years as well, so. So this was a really fun project for me to work on. Um, and also, I want to point out Planet Geo is the contractor we worked with, the consultant we worked with. They truly are leaders and innovator, innovators in their field. Um, I've worked with them actually since they began as a company, um, back ten or twelve years ago, um, and they knocked it out of the park with this plan. Um, they really exceeded my expectations. But again, it was a, it was a great project, and it was a lot of fun. Would like to make a few acknowledgements before we get going into the plan. Uh, first, I'd like to acknowledge the tree board members. We do have two in the audience today. Laura Goss and Carrie Mayu, uh, so thank you for, for attending today. Uh, the tree board was very supportive of this plan. Um, they talked about it for several meetings before it was approved, um, before even approving the original contract with Planet Geo. So there's a lot of thought, um, put into this. Um, would also like to give a special thanks to Bill Moyer. Bill Moyer was on the tree board at the time. Um, he's no longer on the board. He is retired from the city of, of Hutch. He was the park superintendent, um, I don't know how many years ago. Retired many years ago, um, and he's still a very strong advocate for, uh, for urban forestry. So he did make a, a very generous contribution to this, uh, to this plan, um, as well as park staff that helped Sean Thomas, German Lindle, and Echo Blueball, and myself all worked on this plan. Uh, so why do we need a master plan? Kind of the easy answers are the bottom two ones. Um, it's in the bylaws of the tree board. So, Tree Board's been in existence for about thirty years. They've never had a, a master plan, uh, even though it's in there that they will follow and support and create the master plan. It's also in the Hutch Comprehensive Plan that we did a few years back. But really, on top of that, um, those, those top three, um, real, to be more strategic with the resources. Uh, Tree Board has been very successful fundraising, uh, very consistent with their fundraising, but, uh, they realize they need to be very strategic with those resources. Uh, they wanted more community engagement and also a focus on equity, which is kind of a new, a new twist. Um, and we'll get to that kind of towards the end of the presentation on what that looks like. So what is, um, an urban forestry master plan? Um, it's a collaborative planning process, um, that really, you know, dives into existing programs to develop a clear and concise plan. And the key there is the time-oriented, um, clear and concise, uh, to really kind of focus on how do we manage the resources we have, and how do we make progress on, on improving our canopy? Uh, the, the next statement there, uh, just kind of talks about some of the, the key, kind of overall goals of going into it, since before we had any work, really wanted to bolster tree planting, improve equity and accessibility, uh, preserve the character of our neighborhoods, um, and then really manage long-term, uh, the urban forest. So those were the goals kind of going into, into the plan. So the framework to develop the plan, um, is really based on these four questions. What do we have? What do we want? How do we get what we want? And are we getting what we want? Or how do we measure that? So we'll kind of tackle these, um, one at a time. What do we have? Um, so we do have a tree inventory. Uh, there's about forty-seven hundred trees in that inventory. Um, that data was collected about ten years ago, and we have done our best recently to update it, but it's not the most accurate data, but it's what we have. And so all of those trees are on publicly owned property, primarily parks. We do have some of our other facilities, like I believe the trees at City Hall are included in that inventory. So you can see, we have, um, the, the pie chart breaks it down by genus, um, so twenty-two percent pine, eighteen percent oak, and then we have juniper, uh, which would be cedar, and then maple, and so on, so forth. Um, not a bad distribution there. Uh, would like to see really nothing over about twenty, well, fifteen or twenty percent, so we're a little bit heavy on a couple. Um, I've seen much worse when I was in Michigan, you know, over fifty percent maple.
Why do you worry about that? Is it disease?
Disease, yeah. Dutch elm disease is the poster child for that. You know, if you have all, all maple like we did in Michigan, um, there are several diseases that, that attack maples, uh, could be devastating to the community. So that's why we pay attention to that. The other chart then kind of looks at more of the management of the forest and what's happened over the years. And, and so that's where we're at now, uh, lots of young trees, and then actually quite a few big mature trees, so over thirty inches. And we're going to come back to that one, um, in a few minutes as well. Um, so another way we looked at what do we have was, was, since we didn't have a, a full-blown inventory of all the trees citywide, or all the trees, street trees, um, we looked at kind of ten thousand feet up and, and looked at our land cover. So Planet Geo, um, developed one thousand two hundred and fifty random points, so that's the points on the map, and then looked at each individual point and then, um, assigned that point to either non-canopy vegetation, tree canopy, um, soil, basically bare ground, water, or impervious. And so that's how that came out. Uh, so we're about twenty percent tree cover within the city limits, uh, forty-four percent, um, basically grass or non-tree vegetation.
Justin?
Yeah.
Earlier, you said that the tree inventory was on, on public property only. This is public and private, correct?
Correct. This is looking at the entire city. So this is just another way to kind of manage and evaluate, um, the canopy. Uh, so forty-four percent is really kind of our opportunity to grow. Um, obviously, we can't plant in impervious, um, or in, uh, water, uh, the, the soil and dry. A lot of that are, is parking lots, like gravel parking lots, those sorts of thing on bare soil, not necessarily suitable for a tree. So it's primary, that forty-four percent is kind of the opportunity to grow the canopy. So also, kind of answering that question, what do we want then? Um, so this was, is the ideal distribution on size, um, based on what we have. So the darker blue is, is ideal, the light blue is what we have. Um, and really, what we're seeing here, um, is a, uh, sorry. So we're pretty, pretty okay in, in this range, uh, but when we get here, we see kind of a discrepancy, and also see a discrepancy here. The way I interpret this map, or, or this chart, is that about thirty or forty years ago, we didn't plant enough trees. Um, we would like to see this graph kind of slowly come down, kind of similar to what that dark blue is. Um, because we have a lot of trees here, doesn't mean we necessarily have a lot. I mean, it's just percentage-wise, it's, it's higher than what we have here. So when these trees, you know, were, were two inches when they were planted, we weren't planting enough trees. You know, so again, that's thirty-plus years ago that we weren't planting enough trees, so. Uh, not a lot we can do about it now, other than continue to plant trees, um, like you can see here. Um, you, we're right on track now with our tree planting. So, you know, in thirty years, you know, we'll make an improvement on that, so. So also, what do we want, uh, to kind of answer that question? We came up with three primary goals. goals. The first goal is around the resource itself, so around the tree and the canopy itself. The second goal is around management and effectively managing the, the trees, the trees. Um, and the third one is on community, how to engage the community. Um, typically people don't talk about trees a lot unless there's an ice storm or they're raking leaves. Um, we kind of want to change that. Um, or the Tree Board really, really would like to change that, so. So how do we get what we want? So we've got these, these big kind of lofty goals. So each goal then was divided into three, um, objectives, and you can see the objectives there. Um, each objective was then divided into action items. Um, the action items then are really kind of the meat of the, um, of the plan. Those are really the things we can accomplish and measure, um, that we've done. Um, all in all, there are forty-seven action items. So this is, this is just a couple of them. Um, so this is goal three, talking about the community. Uh, and then objective three A is the first of the three objectives. And then you can see here are the, the three action items. Um, the one thing I like about this plan is it doesn't just put all the work on the city. Um, it really divides it out on who should do the work. Um, and a lot of it actually falls on the Tree Board themselves. Um, this, this topic example, you know, shows the Tree Board as being leader. Um, so there's, you know, horticulture and forestry supports it, but the Tree Board i- is the leader. Um, there, we also have, you know, some work that would have to be done by Public Works, engineering, and planning. Um, these next two columns are two additional tools that Planet Geo did, um, in this master plan to help us kind of measure, uh, progress, um, as we, as we try to attain these two goals. Um, and so these numbers here link directly to, to those two tools. And I'll, I'll show you an example of those in just a minute. Um, and then this is reference to the Hutch, uh, Comprehensive Plan, and then this is the timeframe. Um, you know, so again, this is broken down in such a way that it's in small chunks, small bites, and really can make progress. And then using these two tools right here, then we have a way to measure that progress. So one of those, those kind of measuring tools, um, which is kind of getting, getting to that question of, of are we getting what we want, is we did a management audit. Um, so you can see we have, have all these criteria, uh, or all these categories. And then we have a percent achieved over here on the right-hand side. There are a hundred and thirty-two items then that fall underneath each one of these categories. And, and each of those items then are much smaller pieces on whether we achieved them or didn't achieve them. Um, and again, that's a way we can go in. If we want to make progress on, let's say this one is thirty-nine percent achieved is risk management. Um, there are very small things that we can do to kind of improve that score and improve our management in terms of risk management. So again, it's really a step-by-step process, um, on how we can, how we can impact that score. Um, overall, we achieved fifty-five point five. Um, I asked a consultant, I was like, is that good? Is that bad? Is it normal? Um, he said it's slightly above average. He said most people are in that fifty percent range. Um, they did do a model, um, to show what eighty-eight percent would look like. It's in the, it's in the full master plan. Um, some of it's, um, relatively easy and some of it's a little bit more challenging to get there. But again, the thing about this tool is it's measurable. We can go and look and say, we're now achieving, you know, more of these items that fall underneath each category and, and we'll adjust those percentages. The other tool they used was the criterion indicators. Um, there, there are thirty-one of the, these criteria and indicators. Um, and again, these are tied back, um, just like, let me go back here. So just like these categories are, um, each of these items underneath the category are tied directly back to the action items that are tied to those original goals. So it's all linked together on how we can make progress, tying it all back to those original goals. Um, so criterion indicators are, is just really another way of, of kind of slicing up, um, our current management and current, um, canopy. Um, as you can see here, one of the criteria, um, is the diversity. Where we fall right now is moderate. Um, so, um, you, that tells you what, to, to move up to good, we'd have to have no more than fifteen percent of one, of one tree species. So it gives us how we can move from one category to, to the next. Again, there are thirty-one of these. So we can pick that we really want to make an impact in this area and refer to this and, and really shows us how to make that, make that impact. Um, which for me was really the first time I've ever had that step-by-step, this is how we make a change, this is how we make progress. Um, in all the master plans I've done, whether they're forestry-related or not, this one is by far the easiest to show progress and measure that progress. Uh, we talked about equity and access to trees a little bit earlier. This was something that was very, very important to the Tree Board. Um, it was to figure out how we could be more equitable about where we used our resources, where we planted trees, um, where the Tree Board planted trees, where, um, maybe we offered some programs. Um, and so what we did with this map here, um, is we use these criteria on the left to develop this map. The darker the purple, the more of these criteria were met. Um, those criteria were available planting space, stormwater management, energy conservation, and air quality improvement. Those criteria came from that map I showed you earlier with the twelve-hundred points. They also collected data on those. So if there was points that met any of these criteria, they noted that when they made that point. Um, so the other, the, the other criteria then we set for, uh, for this map was income. Um, so we looked at census block data, uh, and, and any, uh, census block that was twenty-five percent below poverty line, twenty percent below, or twenty percent or higher, uh, minority population, um, was classified as, as a vulnerable population, which is twenty percent more of under five or over sixty-four. Um, and then housing conditions, uh, which we got from Planning Department, um, the lowest twenty percent housing conditions from some data they had. So compiled all of that to really come up with this map that shows we've got some neighborhoods that would have, that would be the most impacted by adding trees to their neighborhood. This doesn't necessarily mean street trees. This could be trees in the backyard, trees in the front yard. Um, this really gives a Tree Board a tool to target neighborhoods, um, with some sort of incentive program. I mean, it could be street tree planting or it could be, it could be more. Um, uh, so this was, this is just one map. There's, I think, thirty maps that go along with this, um, that kind of slice up the, the data. This is kind of the master overall, overall plan.
And Justin, I noticed in the, in the full plan that you included yesterday that there's some ideas about, or may, or maybe some appetite for exploring ways to help with costs of maintaining trees on private property if they're, if they're in those lower income areas.
Yeah, that, that gets at that, at that equity, um, idea because if you've ever had tree work done, it's expensive to hire a licensed, certified, uh, well-qualified arborist. It's expensive. Um, and, and in the city of Hutch, um, the adjoining homeowner is responsible for the tree on the city right away. Um, and so what we see is a discrepancy, um, between truly income levels and the ability to maintain those trees. Um, and so I think this kind of gets at that, 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 um, you know, can we target some areas of lower income that maybe don't have the need, the necessary resources to maintain their trees? Is that something the Tree Board can tackle and wants to tackle? I think, I think it is. I'm not going to speak for them, but I know there's an appetite.
So that would be more driven by maybe a fundraising on their part or by volunteers?
Yeah.
Okay. I was just curious what, what that might look on, like, from a budget impact standpoint, if we would be putting more resources to, to maintenance versus planning or?
This really, tackling the equity issue is, is much more done through the Tree Board, through private donations, because we don't have the responsibility, really the, the authority, I guess, to go in. Uh, well, we do have the authority, but we don't have the precedent to going in and maintaining trees on the right-of-way. Um, so really, to me, this is much more of a Tree Board incentive program or however they want to do it. Um, but for the first time now, we kind of have that data on where do we start if we want to make an impact.
Great.
I assume you've made some, um, inroads or have some partnerships or whatever with the various utilities, uh, that maybe they would be inclined. I know they go about and trim trees on occasion for their own benefits to get things out of lines, get things out of, uh,
Reliability tree?
Yeah.
That's what they call it.
Uh, things like that. I assume your conversation with those folks, try and leverage whatever they do.
Yeah, I actually know the work planner for West Dar Farlow. I worked with him in Wichita as well. So anytime they are trimming trees, um, in Hutchinson, he gives me a call. Um, if there's anything, nice save. If there, if there's anything, um, that he has questions or concerns with, with, he'll give me a call and we'll go and look at it, so.
And they also are a great resource for, for funding, for grants, for, um, a lot of times they'll do volunteer programs. They're a great resource for the, the Tree Board as well.
Justin, speaking of tree trimming, uh, I've got kind of an isolated question here, but I drive North Monroe quite a bit from Fourth North to Twenty-Fifth. And years ago, when Monroe was repaved and I think reconfigured, there was a, a plan, I presume by the city, along the boulevards to plant trees along the boulevards right at the curb. And they did. And as I drive that, uh, and this is a very isolated question, as I drive that year in and year out, I notice that the trees are maturing more. And in some cases, say if you'd come off of, oh, I think Twentieth and Monroe going north, there's a line of site obstruction there. I guess my question is, is that whose responsibility is it to trim the trees? Uh, is that, do those trees sit on the city's public right-of-way? Or is it, is it the, uh, property owner's responsibility? How does that policy work?
It is, and the city ordinance, it is the, um, adjoining property's owner's responsibility to maintain those trees. Um, we will clear, um, any safety issues. So if we're really concerned about a blocked stop sign or blocked traffic sign or a, um, site triangle issue, we will do that.
The city will do that?
The city will do it, yeah. It, it's, it's kind of a judgment call. If we feel like, you know, can this situation last another thirty days now that we're aware of it and we give notice to the homeowner to, um, to take care of it? Or are we so uncomfortable with the situation that we want to rectify it now?
Yeah. I love the trees and it, it's a, it's a great, uh, amenity to the neighborhood. But over time, will those trees become an issue, uh, in managing the size of those trees?
So if they're properly maintained, they shouldn't.
They should.
They, they should not. They should be pruned up regularly. Um, in, in one thing we've talked about internally is developing, um, you know, a, a, a group of volunteers to go back five or ten years after these tree plantings that are trained to go in and prune these, these trees properly as opposed to just telling the tree owner, hey, you need to prune this tree because it's too low. Um, is to really go in, especially on these young trees, a little bit of maintenance right now, when they're, you know, this big around.
Right.
Um, prevents a whole lot of headache from down the road. Um, you, stuff that you can now do from the ground with hand tools, um, you know, in the future becomes power tools and, and bucket trucks and that kind of stuff, so. But again, the way the city ordinance is written, it's not necessarily the city's responsibility. Um, the Tree Board sees that, sees there's kind of a discrepancy there. And so there has been some interest in some of these volunteer groups, um, that could be trained by professional staff in the city, um, and maybe assisted by the city in going out and cleaning up some of those.
Well, I know you're aware of it, but something to, to keep an eye on, uh?
We've got a couple others.
And, and there's, again, that's a very isolated situation.
Yep. Yeah, so that's my, my, my quick presentation. The, the, there are a couple other, um, added resources that I didn't talk about in the master plan. Um, one is an ordinance review. So they did a comprehensive ordinance review, not just of, um, uh, chapter eleven, I believe it is. It focuses on trees, but of all the city ordinance that have to do with trees. Um, and there's a lot of detail there on suggestions. Um, they gave us some additional resources for some programming and community outreach ideas, um, some pest and disease control management, kind of some, some emerging pests and threats to urban forest, um, and also some speed, tree species selection, um, tools as well. So there's a ton of information. Like I said, it's, it's a, once you get, dive into this plan really thoroughly, it is a, it is a really well-done, um, plan. Uh, Tree Board did, uh, did adopt, uh, the plan. Um, I'm asking you guys today to accept the, the plan. Um, and the reason I say accept and not adopt is really the bulk of this work is done through the Tree Board. They're the ones that have to do the heavy lifting to make this work happen. Um, the idea today is just as city council, you would say, this is a great plan. We want the Tree Board to do this work, so.
Well, I really want to commend you and the Tree Board and certainly thank Bill Moyer for his donation. Um, I think this is something we take for granted in this community. Um, probably people who, who notice the trees probably don't have any idea the extensive amount of planning and maintenance that goes into, to that canopy and, and all the volunteer hours. So, um, I think it's one of the many things that makes our community look really good. And I just appreciate all the work that you and the Tree Board have done.
Jason, I, or Justin, I've got a question related to the operation of the particular department in terms of in your judgment and the time you've been here, um, are, is your comfort level, um, okay with the level of funding that the city provides, um, to the department?
When we're at full staff, yes. We've, we've had a hard time, um, uh, keeping it at full staff. Um, it's a very unique, very niche skill set. So we've had a hard time recruiting for that, for that position. Um, you know, I would like to see us, um, kind of expand some of the work that we're doing, um, you know, which would be kind of programmatic changes as far as identifying neighborhoods that maybe we go in and assist with. Um, again, work that would come out through the Tree Board but would involve the city. Um, but from just a, a pure funding, you know, until we, um, really expand what we're responsible for. So as long as we're only responsible for, for trees on public property, um, you know, I think what we have, have is adequate. Um, you know, if we were to ever even consider taking right-of-way trees or street trees, that's a whole nother conversation.
Yeah.
Um, you know, that's a, it would be great to do. Um, I'm a huge advocate for it, but I know the cost of doing it and that's, you know, not, not realistic at this point. The plan talks about that a little bit, um, but, you know, that's not, that's not in the five-year plan to take on, you know, thousands and thousands of more trees, so.
Okay. Appreciate your thoughts.
Great roadmap. Obviously, um, you, you know, if you don't know where you're going, how the heck are you going to get there? So I like that you were able to, uh, illustrate, that there's actionable items. Those items are assigned to individuals and there's real measurables. I, I didn't think about it until you actually said it, but you're right. How, there isn't a plan that's comparable to this, that you can truly recognize if it's working or not. The trees are growing, they're more in number, they're larger in size, or they're not. And so, um, I, I commend you for putting it together. Uh, in jest, I was talking to Steve and John earlier. I also like the brevity of the amount of paper that was utilized in the, uh, the one, I've never received one this small before, but...
That's just the executive.
Bear in mind, and I appreciate that. And so utilizing this rather than paper, uh, was, uh, probably, uh, it was noted, let's put it that way.
I think he has a big one for us if we want.
I do. I didn't print one for everybody, but if anybody would like a
It's available.
A hard copy. I did late yesterday send, send the full copy electronic.
Electronically, and that's available.
The other thing I want to point out that I failed to mention, um, is the Tree Board did fund the entire plan. Um, so there's no, no tax dollars. Um, and this, the, the Tree Board does all their own fundraising. Those funds are held at the Community Foundation at the Trees for Tomorrow.
Oh, I see.
So I think that's a, an important detail.
Absolutely.
Well, kudos to the Tree Board.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a hundred and thirty-four pages. If, if you.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, it, it was not lost on me, yeah. That, uh, as many documents as we get.
Oh, my goodness.
Justin can, go ahead. No, you're in a role, go for it.
No, no, I was, he's.
Justin, there, and I, I'm scrolling through the electronic version and I may have scrolled through it, but maybe a half a dozen or so slides back. You had a, um, I think it was purple color, and I think that was the slide talking. What took you so long to get there?
There's one slide back.
One slide back, wow. Um, and, uh, that is identifying areas that would benefit the most from?
More trees.
More trees, essentially?
More trees, more resources put into that, that communities or those neighborhoods from the Tree Board, um, based on the idea of equity.
Right, right. And of course, uh, income race, vulnerability of population are, are part of those processes. And there's another one that you haven't shown that I, I think is near the very end of the, um, full plan that I think is done in Browns. Uh, yeah. And let's see, what's this one called? Um?
What page is it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Uh, SS. Apparently this has to do with plantable space prioritization, but I think the, the chart itself is population living in poverty, which of course, uh, draws to that one element, that one element alone. But essentially, there's a lot of brown, dark brown and light brown, which are the higher and highest. I, I just want to comment and draw attention to. And that one does the, does something similar, uh, in terms of where the darker purples tend to fall. And of course, they're in the south part of town again. Now, there are some further north, I see. Uh, it looks like probably some newer subdivisions that haven't had the time maybe to get trees planted because of their, uh, relative youthfulness in terms of being a, a housing area.
Yeah, all these criteria were weighted equally.
Okay.
In this, so, um, so you, there could be neighborhoods that rank really high in some of these top categories, uh, that show up a little bit darker, darker purple. But the brown.
But it's, it struck me that where, again, South Part of Town, um, you know, and, and in several different matrices, um, this is what I'm looking at in terms... different matrices, this is what I'm looking at in terms of poverty level and that one just in terms of those eight or ten criteria you've got there, that would, would certainly warrant more attention, I would take it.
Yeah. So the, the one you're referring to is just the poverty level?
Yes.
So just the one, so this income.
Right.
So it's the map that shows neighborhoods or census blocks that are twenty-five percent below the poverty level.
Right. Almost everything's south of seventeenth. Not, not much of, and then of course, the further south you go, the darker the colors get. Okay.
And I have, so I have the individual maps for each one of those, those criteria. And actually, there's, and there's combinations of that. The, this purple one is just the, the overall master with all of them shown.
Are you ready for a motion?
If, if, if you're prepared to give it.
If I am, I will move to accept the urban forest master plan as prepared by Planet Geo.
Second.
Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Iris DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you to the Tree Board as well. Next item, please.
Item eight, report of city officials.
Uh, Jay?
Um, I do have a few items, thank you. I wanted to remind everyone that the Christmas parade is this Saturday at nine AM in downtown Hutchinson. It's always a really nice parade. And of course, wish everyone happy Thanksgiving because we won't be back before the holiday. And I had one question to Justin about the water slide property and, and the RFP process on leasing that property out west of town and where we're at in that situation.
So a few weeks ago, we received proposals. We did an RFP a couple months ago. And last week, city manager, myself, Tony Finley from Hutch Rec and Karen Neal, president or chair of Hutch Rec Board, all met to review that proposal. I have not followed back up with the, the individual proposal. There were some, some, some discussion points we wanted to kind of discuss, but that process is taking place.
Moving along?
Yes.
Okay, so when do you suppose we'll have a, a recommendation before the council?
Would like, would like to do something by the end of the year.
Great, okay. Well, thank you so much.
We've got to start that initial negotiation, hopefully this one, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks. Anything else, Jay?
No, that's it. Thank you so much.
Steve?
Jay, the question of you, how many, how many dollars were given out last Thursday by the Fund for Hutchinson, do you recall?
Um, I believe it was two hundred and nine thousand.
I thought it was a little over two hundred.
Two hundred and six.
Um, I, I've, I've attended the, the Fund for Hutchinson grant awards, I don't know, several times over the years, and I'm not sure what was different about this one for me other than about three-fourths of the way through, it just struck me, here was two hundred and some thousand dollars that was going into our community, some to some of the communities, areas in the county, but primarily here to Hutchinson. And so often, we hear about nothing's happening, do something about this, why don't, you know, here was two hundred thousand dollars. And I, I did this by memory, I failed to review the, the program book this morning, but there were, there were programs or there were monies given to, to programs and, and impetuses on youth, housing, drug treatment, arts, theater and symphony, school, community improvement, and that's not everything. There was thirty or so, maybe.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Anyhow, I, I'm doing this for the audience and whoever hears about it, some tremendous stuff. And this is all based upon the giving and largess of, of the residents of Hutchinson and of course, the good use of that money through the, the community foundation. But it just struck me as I sat there, how much impact is being had. And I, I think just a big shout-out for, for us as community, but also to recognize and be sure that we, we promote that as well, in, in terms of the, the impact that we're having. And there he sits, a particular shout-out to Planning Department, pop-up event, I'm not, may not be using the right term.
Tactical urbanism.
Yes.
Thank you. That's going to be going on in twenty-twenty.
A series of four of them throughout the city.
I'm sorry?
A series of four of them throughout the city.
Right. So particularly to that, and that was just another one of the examples of, of what's, what's going on through that. Second item, the Interfaith Housing has an event following the parade called Open House and Tree Auction. Part of that's going to be a live auction, I think they've also got some silent auctions. So might head down or head over to Interfaith Housing on, on Far East Avenue A following the parade on Tuesday for the Open House and Tree Auction that will occur there. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks for calling that to our attention. I know that was a worthwhile event, but you're right, when you break it down to numbers, it's, it's very impressive, the gift giving and then the, uh, parting use of those gifts. John?
Maybe to Chief Hooper, if you wouldn't mind. I get a little anxious once in a while, but I'm particularly curious in terms of maybe providing us a little bit of an update of where we are on the law enforcement center and the architectural piece of it and so on.
Good morning. We are still in the process of that, we're still working with the architects. We had some delay in that process, you know, it's a fairly old building and we're having some electrical issues in mapping out the electric and figure out how they're going to do that, obviously with the communications center being there and our infrastructure as far as our computer and our, and those type of things, we have a higher need in that area than most facilities. So that was the most recent holdup. We were really supposed to send it out to bid October first, but that project's been delayed through Landmark because of those electrical concerns and trying to map that out.
So what would twenty-twenty look like in terms of the project? In terms of letting, letting and so on?
Yeah, we're still hoping to, you know, once it goes out to bid, we're looking at, you know, about a thirty-day bid process for that to come back in and get a general contractor and those type of things. We're still hopeful that that will all be done this year and we'll look at starting construction, the first part of twenty-twenty. We're looking at about a ten-month construction period. And so we'll hopefully, so we'll take up the majority of, of twenty-twenty for that, that construction.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yes, thank you very much. Anything else, Phil? Nancy?
Actually, yes, and Peter got out of here before I had a chance to ask my question, but maybe Chief Bear can help out. I went out Friday to watch the airplane, the water, I, I'm going to call it a water tanker, I don't know what the proper technical term is, but it was fascinating. So how, I understand that's owned by a private individual. And it's not, I mean, we, the city doesn't own the airplane or perform any of that. How does he get contracted to come help?
Um, that's a great question, and I actually had a little discussion with the city manager here after our busy weekend with all the fires that we've been having lately.
Yeah, right.
And with a demonstration is, I've actually got some personal phone calls about why wasn't the airplane deployed.
Mm-hmm.
And I think the general public thinks that's owned by the Hutchinson Fire Department. I think that's one misperception that's out there since it's based out of Hutchinson.
Yeah.
Uh, there's all kinds of different things yet with this water tanker that they have. It holds eight hundred gallons of water. And right now, it's, it's run through basically the state Kansas Forestry Service.
Okay.
Uh, one thing too is anytime you call that thing up, it's four thousand dollars an hour. And there's no guaranteed payment. So if I, as chief, I could get tagged for a six-hour bill for twenty-four thousand dollars and stuff like that if I call that unit up. Second thing right now, yet it's sort of the cart before the horse. And I had a conversation with, with the Kansas Forestry Department yesterday, and actually we're going to be on the radio tomorrow morning, I'm bringing Rodney in from the Kansas Forestry Department to be with, on the radio at seven fifteen tomorrow, and we're going to be talking about this stuff. But there's no standard operating procedures in place yet with this thing. And so when you think about this, we have this plane here, but it, it might work great out in western Kansas where there's no homes and all these other buildings that get thousands of acres of open land, they can just drive by, dump some water out, there's really no firefighters around. But around here, where we have what I call true urban interface, well and firefighting, where we have ten acres and we have a brand-new house and they're all farmettes, basically.
They're all what?
Farmettes.
Fire mats.
Farmettes.
Farm mats.
Mini farms.
Mini farms, yeah, basically.
Excuse me, thank you.
And so where they want, you know, a few cattle, a few horses, stuff like that, fence it in and stuff like that creates many problems for us. We save numerous houses on the weekend fires to the east of town here. But when a plane comes in and dumps this water, and if there's some videos out west that prove this fact, this plane flies at about a hundred and eighty miles an hour or a hundred and some miles an hour, and when you're dumping this water, it can hit trees. If it actually hits a pickup, it'll roll a pickup truck.
That's.
And so we, there's no communications yet between ground and that airplane. So this airplane does not have an eight hundred megahertz radio in it with a state template yet for communications. So until they get all these other things in place, I think down the road, it could be a potential asset. But again, it's sort of, until we get a standard operating procedure, I'm not going to risk losing my men and women on the front lines out there because it's a very vain, dangerous operation, just dumping water out of the sky. And if it hits even, like six firefighters got killed out west last year just from water hitting the burned trees and they're weak, they tip over and they landed on firefighters and killed them. And so it's not as ea, as easy as it seems as just, like I said, flying around and dumping this water out. Actually, around here, and we had a conversation again yesterday with the Forestry Department, the helicopters actually work better for us right around the Hutchinson area than like out west.
You can pinpoint it, yeah.
Because they can pinpoint, yeah, they can pinpoint where they're actually dumping the water and stuff like that, so. But great question.
Well, it, it was interesting to watch, and I certainly understand what you mean by the force and the volume that that, when it drops the water that comes down. So I'm glad to know what you're doing to figure out how it's going to work, if it's going to work.
Briefly, while I still have you up here, I'm sorry, Nancy.
No, I'm, I'm done.
While I've got you up here as well, you've mentioned there's been multiple fires as of late. I know there was a house fire Thursday in the wee hours of the morning, but three people got out. Do you know some of the origins of any of these fires or has that been determined yet?
Uh, yes, it's been a crazy, busy week. I think we've had about eight brush fires now.
Eight brush.
Two structure fires in the last little bit here in the city, two. One of the structures fires was lit by a gentleman that was, two people were in a bedroom. The cause of that one was a butane torch that started the bedroom on fire. The second one on the south side of town was actually a smoker grill. They were burning, he made a homemade smoker grill, was burning off the oils and stuff that were inside of it. And there was hard, charcoal and stuff inside the grill, actually started the leaves and stuff on fire, which spread underneath the porch, started the outside of the home and got up in the attic space and ran the attic space.
Okay.
Um, we also had one here recently, was a, a four-year-old child lit a bedroom on fire, so.
Playing with matches.
Yeah, playing with matches. So on every one of these fires, we always go around the day after, we canvass a two-block radius around the home, and we usually knock on every door, and if they're not home, we hang a flyer on the door. Because when we have a fire in a neighborhood, we have forty people standing outside watching us work and there's a lot of unanswered questions for our community. And so we, it's our chance to go back around and actually tell them what happened, why we cut a hole in the roof, why we knocked out this window on the home or whatever. And we can explain a lot of things. And then it's our opportunity to, if they don't have a smoke detector in their home or something, we can go in and then we'll mount a free smoke detector for them.
Hey, neat. Good.
Okay, yeah. More information's always best, so yeah, I like that. Thank you for indulging me with that as well. The only thing I had was a poem, I think I shall never see a poem lovely as a tree. Now, I'm not going to recite that.
That was good.
We're starting to run long, but. And Rebecca, if I, if you would indulge me for a moment, I wanted to invite everybody to participate in the online city manager survey, but if you could tell me where people might find that. I know it's on the city website, I think it's being promoted on Facebook, could you help me spread that word? And, and the dates, it's open now and I believe it closes on the twenty-second. Can you fill in the gaps?
Uh, that's correct. It'll be open until five PM on the twenty-second. If you go to our city Facebook page, we've promoted it on there, it's actually being run through Survey Monkey, so all of those responses aren't even coming through the city, they're being filtered through our search organization. And if you go to the city's website, scroll down a little bit, there's a news brief, you can click there, it'll take you to the link as well. So there are a few places you can find it. I know it's been sent out through newsletters, through YP, I'm sure there'll be other organizations, Hutch Rec has shared it on Facebook, so it's, it should be easy to find if you're looking.
Perfect. Well, and, and for those that are listening, those that are in the audience most know, representative from the paper, hopefully we can get the word out because this will be the opportunity for the general citizens, populace to give their input on what they're looking for in a future city leader. So wonderful, thank you for helping me. That's really all I had. John, city manager?
Uh, just a quick update, you, you received word last week, or we did, you're aware of it, we did not receive our build grant application for Woody Seed. And kind of just talk a little bit about next steps and from a staff perspective, what, what we would recommend is that we take the opportunity for debriefing with the Department of Transportation, you asked, to just learn a little bit more about our application, maybe what the weaknesses were, and, and try to get a feel as to whether it's strong enough that we would consider submitting that next year. And then come back with more information based on that call, and maybe the council that time's going to make a determination of whether we resubmit, you know, whether we proceed with the original, you know, renovation of the existing bridges, or whether we look at other funding sources and maybe perhaps fund more on our end to complete the Woody Seed as was the concept proposed. So still a lot of information out there. Again, obviously we're disappointed that we didn't receive that funding, but we got some more opportunities to learn a little bit more about why, so. And we'll be doing that probably later this, probably more likely next week, get that call set up, so.
John, help my memory on that, the cost of renovation versus the cost, had we been successful in that grant?
Roughly, we were talking about a little over two million to renovate, rehab the current bridges.
Right.
Versus six point two, I think, a little over six million for the concept that was presented, and that would have been an eighty-twenty match, basically.
So we had about one point two, one point three million would have been our map.
Right, correct. Yeah. I noticed in our twenty-nineteen line item of capital improvements, we had a line item of a little over two million dollars of GO bonds. Uh, will that just sit there as such? Yeah, we, we have not issued those. I know you haven't issued them, yeah. But they'll just sit there? Yeah. Or that, that line item? It's got to be turned on hold until we figure out what the, you know, what the next steps would be and.
And the bridge is, it's, obviously it's on our radar for, for a reason, but it's not in dire straits or anything like that. It's certainly safe to drive over, but something needs to be addressed, is that fair?
Soon, yeah, I think, I, I think the bigger issue probably is going to be the surface. And if, if in fact we do proceed with a new grant application, it's a year down the road, I think we're going to have to look at next year doing some better, maybe more repairs, simply like, you know, a little bit like what we did on Apple Lane, kind of to get us through a time period. We spent some time there last year, or this year, I guess, and, but I think it's probably going to be, have to be addressed again after the winter, so it's something we need to talk about, so.
I don't envy that particular council that.
Yeah.
But it's not my problem. I'm kidding.
It's a big decision.
Joking. Wonderful, anything else?
And I had one other thing, just a reminder that starting tomorrow, actually starting Thursday, but tomorrow teams come in for the NJCA.
That's right.
And they'll be arriving, practices on Wednesday, games Thursday through Saturday, so it's a great event that we're able to host at the newly renovated arena.
This is our third year of the three-year, am I remembering correctly?
Yeah, next year it's going to another site in Missouri, I believe, and then back.
I've heard it's very well-received. We've been good hosts and people have joined it.
You said back against, do we already have a period?
You know, I know it's moving again next year, but I don't want to say that I know, yeah. But, yeah, this will be, did you say fourth?
I thought it was the third or three.
This will be the third year, it's three-year commitment, right. That's all I had, Mayor.
Very good. Anything else from anyone else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second. Moved in second, please call the roll.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Horace DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Inzki?
Yes. Thank you all.
Those of you who are left.
Yeah. Survived the end.